She would actually be able to start.
She told us four weeks. Right.
What school kids?
Well, she's got a thirteen year old who goes to school. Her husband's working in Portsmouth. That's the only red flag that I saw.
Yeah.
She indicated four weeks from the date of us telling her.
And I think that would be her issue to work out, not ours, yeah.
And um.
I thought she was excellent. I thought she had an excellent resume. I thought she was relaxed and well spoken. I thought she would fit perfectly.
Great skills.
Absolutely.
What about leadership um and teamwork?
Willing to learn, yeah. Started a friends group.
Oh, started a friends group?
Yeah.
Um, and you said Anne Marie A.
But no, I I um I I felt like I was sitting here with a grin on my face. I mean, I just really got a great feeling from her. As far as her whole demeanor and the way that she.
Shout out to Laura.
I think she could bring a lot.
Yeah, she's got a mic. Turn it on. Thank you, Laura.
I I liked her even better than our initial candidate. I felt more comfortable with her. She seemed like a better fit for.
Yeah.
Who we have, um, our patrons, I that's.
What was your take?
I liked her. I liked her a lot. Um, seems down to earth. Uh, I like her experience, technology.
Yes.
Young adult director. Um, so I I think she pretty much hits all levels there.
That's what I really liked.
Yeah.
Yeah, well rounded, well rounded.
I think that's great.
And how do you think um she'll mesh with the current staff and the patrons?
I I feel like she should mesh fine with them.
Good.
I can't imagine anybody not being comfortable with, comfortable with her.
Yeah.
And I think she comes across as a leader who has high expectations and I think that that's a great. She reminded me of somebody that I've worked with before who brought everybody to the next level. I mean, who just really.
I thought of that too when she was talking.
You know, it's exciting to work with somebody that's that enthusiastic and that passionate.
Yeah, and professional and and like you said, um, she's, you know, I heard her say at our interview. You know, not a micromanager, manages to people's strengths, um.
Collaborative.
Yeah, collaboration and uh and also letting you run with, uh, you know, where you want to go, where your passion is.
And what I took from it was she holds staff to high standards.
And she wants to meet with them. She wants, yeah.
She said professional. She kept mentioning that.
Yeah, I I like that too.
She wants to meet with people like weekly, I think she was talking about, to just make sure they're all on the same page and to deal if there's any issues going on.
Yes. Just have a.
Yeah, ten minute staff meeting can do wonders and.
Ten minute chat, everybody on the same page thing.
Yeah.
Our last director never wanted to have staff meetings because it was never time to get everybody together together.
Have to be real careful.
I I think that's good because I li- I like the idea of having communication.
Yes. Yes, exactly.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. Did you guys talk about the long range plans?
Yes.
Yep.
Um, because I thought that was a really good experience there too, that she's already done a long range plan and she's read our long range plan. She knows where we need to go. And she also talked about having that long range plan as there where everybody else's goals come from, you know.
Exactly.
So is that meeting, you know, everything feeds to the long range plan.
We didn't really discuss the annual action plan updates, but we did talk about some of the pluses and the minuses and things that are going to be carried over.
Yeah.
And I even thought her cover letter really, she she put some, she put her time and effort and she put her research into everything that she was doing.
Yes.
Except for Pawtucket versus Pintucket, but she she was able to 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 put her skills together with this community and this library. She she made it like a real life thing.
Right. Into, yeah, the cover letter is into us.
Yeah.
Which I, you know, that took time for her to do that part.
Um, so do we go to a vote? Um, how do you think, did uh did the public have good questions?
There was only one member of the public. Ron was here. It was part of the search committee.
Ron, it was part of the search committee.
There was only one member of the public here.
And then uh.
And she talked about the friends.
Friends of the library, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, that's great. So do we go to a vote?
I think we do go to a vote.
So the three of us stay out of the vote?
We can vote to move forward.
Okay.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
I make a motion.
Two.
Two, do, yes.
Motion two.
To opposite position as soon as possible.
I second.
And all in favor? Anybody opposed? Anybody with abstaining? And excellent, so.
Well, I'll talk to Denise tomorrow. We'll make the next steps and then I'll keep everybody informed as we um go along in the process.
I think the next Board of Selectmen meeting is scheduled right now for February ninth, so um.
They may have it next Monday because they canceled this Monday.
Uh, for the snow. That would even be better because then we could, um, uh, we were talking, you know, talking about when she would give the notice. Is that after she, you know, when when would Amy be feel comfortable giving her notice? Is it going to be when we give her the offer or when it's ratified by the selectmen? And, you know, might be waiting for the ratification of a selectman before you gave up a career.
Yeah.
But if you take our recommendation so strongly, it's almost as like.
Right. Right. So it'd be easier than waiting two weeks, uh, just to wait one week.
Yeah, I think they will need.
Absolutely.
All right, well, I, that would be great. Um, so it is now eight twenty theoretically on that clock.
That's when we're going by.
And Laurel, you want to leave because you're not feeling well?
Not feeling well at all, but thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming while you're not feeling well. Rest up.
Thank you for coming, Laurel. Feel good.
Thank you.
And don't breathe on me.
Take your germs with you as you walk off.
Bring them all.
Hey, take that paper. You touched it. I'm only teasing.
Take all the air with you.
Um, thank you, thank you, Laurel. So here we are on the agenda with um the trustee vacancy. Um, Heidi, um.
Snyder.
Snyder, uh, um, had to resign because of her family's um schedule changes, so she was not going to be able to make Monday and Wednesday meetings. And I so appreciate I, uh, all of us, um, our dedication and Heidi's dedication, uh, because, you know, it's really hard to be a trustee is what she was saying. And not be able to make meetings. You cannot keep up. It's not, you know, it's not appropriate. And she just felt that, uh, she did offer to remain on the search committee for the children's teen librarian as a member of the community, uh, to keep the continuity there if Diana wished that. And um, so now our next steps are to bring, uh, to put forth any nominations for people that might um, want to take her vacancy until town meeting, so then they would have to take out papers and run for the rest of her term. So not another three year term, but like a two year term or whatever the rest remaining part is. I think it's two years for Heidi. And I wanted to just say I really appreciate, you know, we don't, we aren't having to cancel meetings because of lack of a quorum. I uh so appreciate all that dedication from everybody. And more often than not, we have nine people, not less. And um, I appreciate that too, so thank you, everybody.
And Heidi was terrific. It's sad to see her go.
Yeah, she really was terrific and um. She's, she's just not a trustee. She's not gone completely. Active when we need her. Let us, let her know.
She always volunteers for the book sale, makes for the bake sale.
If she can, yeah. Yep, that's great. And has children for all the programs. So does anybody have any uh names they would like to put forth? Or have they spoken to anybody that would, might want to take that position?
I have. Uh, Jay Collins, um, talked to me the other day and he's interested in coming aboard as well.
And um, anybody else?
Anne McCann has attended all our meetings. She wasn't here tonight, but apparently she's interested, uh, very much interested according to some social media. I don't look at it, but I'm told that she uh.
Yeah, I spoke with her one night. She was very interested in it.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but we haven't, nobody's been able to speak to her specifically about it.
I've not spoken to her about it, no. I've just spoken to him about it.
So, um, so we know Jay is interested and we know Anne is. We have to put the nomination forward by February fifteenth um for, to the selectmen.
And by then they're going to have to be taking out nominations first.
Right, March.
Well, they have till March fifteenth.
March fifteenth is the last day.
I think it's March fifteen to fourteen, yeah.
Yeah, um, because I had, I'm on this um cycle as well. Um, and I just wonder, speaking of taking out papers, it was pointed out to remind people that you are not allowed to solicit signatures inside a town meeting, I mean, a town building.
Town building.
So not at the library, not at town hall, not at the schools, uh, which.
So it'll hit you all up in the parking lot.
Yeah.
Um, the, the last day to obtain papers is March twelfth.
Yeah.
The last day to submit papers is March sixteenth.
Oh, okay.
Um, so. Um, so can we um.
Do we want someone to call Anne to see?
I don't have her number. Does anybody have her number?
We can get it.
You might have it at the library because she's a volunteer.
Yeah.
Yes, as a volunteer.
Yeah, she volunteered there too.
The problem is, is that we need to vote on the name tonight to move, or either that or we have to have another meeting.
I thought we didn't have to submit it till the fifteenth of February.
We won't have another meeting.
Yeah, we don't have a meeting.
So we could have a, we could have a five minute meeting between.
Sure.
After.
Well, we know that Jay is interested. Maybe just submit one name.
I think we, I think to be fair.
We know Anne, I mean, we know Anne is interested because she's posted at Paul's place that she wants to.
That she was talking about taking out papers.
Yeah.
And doing that, so.
But I think it's, I think a phone call is is appropriate before we vote.
Appropriate. Right. Okay. Um.
So. I'm happy to give her a call if.
Excellent.
If the board would like me to and then we can, we can meet again.
I would, yeah.
Do we want to, do you want someone, one of us to leave the room and make a phone call now while other things are going on?
We have a phone number. We don't, nobody has a phone number.
Have a phone number.
So we'd have to go back to the library. Um, this is my thought. Anne has come to a lot of um meetings.
Exactly.
Whereas Jay hasn't come to the meeting, so I feel like she's probably more um.
And she's a volunteer.
On the same page, yeah, and on the same page of where we've been.
A volunteer and she works the book sales.
Right, and um, you know, she started, you know, when we asked for volunteer, more volunteers because of the staffing, she stepped up.
I have her number here.
You have it?
And she works the bake sales.
So um.
Laurie, do you want to call? Do you want me to call?
I don't, I'm fine.
Okay.
So let's, let's um.
I shouldn't do it from in this room though, right?
Okay, let's go on pause again.
Well, Laurie's going to step out.
No, you go ahead.
We can continue to have a discussion here.
Let's carry on the meeting because it's getting.
So do you want to? Yep, let's approve minutes. Um.
But I just, on the other side of that, Anne has been here, but Jay's a very.
Active.
Active library patron. So I think either one of them would be, you know, good for us.
Do we have um only one set of minutes?
The last ones were given to us at the last meeting.
Oh, right, right. Yes, they were. Right here. So for January fifth, anybody have any um suggestions, changes, or corrections?
They look good today.
And what's the other date, Carlos?
December.
Fifteenth?
Yes.
Fifteenth, yeah. I don't have any of them.
Yeah, those were the purple ones.
Yeah.
That's the January, but we look at the December. There's a December.
Oh, you know what? Were you at the last meeting?
No.
Yeah.
Oh, they were handed out then.
Yeah. So let's give Barbara a minute to read that. Um.
There's been some, some nominations.
We can, I mean, we can wait and have a five minute meeting, Laurie. I make a motion to accept the minutes of the December.
You know what? We're going to be together uh tomorrow.
That's right, but we have to post a meeting.
We have to post a meeting.
Oh, that's true, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
So, right, we won't be able to do that.
Her quote is, "My favorite thing about living in Grohlun is the library."
You know something? Let's give her a chance. If we don't read her tonight, let's give her a chance.
Yeah, let's give her a call and.
All right, we'll have a five minute meeting um to move that forward, um, filling Heidi's seat. That would be great. So how, how's the December fifteenth me, minutes? Anybody have any changes? Can I have a?
I make a motion to accept the minutes of the December fifteenth meeting.
And the February, January fifth?
And the January fifth meeting.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes?
Do you have a second on my motion?
Oh, sorry.
I'll second your motion.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstaining?
Five abstains from which one?
Was that that one? I was there for that one.
Didn't we approve both of them?
We did approve both of them together. You abstained from the fifth.
I abstained from the fifth.
All right.
Trying to slide that in.
Thank you. Um. Staffing update.
Um, so, well, we just have the director search manager here. We've approved that.
Yay.
Um, we've had the, the.
Children's.
Children's um team. Diana, if you just want to quick update on that.
Um, we had had another interview with a potential candidate, um, but she has a lot going on in her life this coming spring and summer. So she actually ended up deciding that she would not be able to focus um as much as she knows we would need. Um, and so she, she thought um better of, of um.
She withdrew? She withdrew.
Basically, yes, yeah, basically. Um, but yeah, she, she would have been far too busy.
Um.
Well, no. Have they known their bites?
There's been, there was three other bites that they had. Another one had withdrawn. Her hours were increased um at her current position.
So when we called her references, they said, "No, we don't want to lose you. We will give you more hours."
And the other one um decided it was too far away and was unable to make the commitment to move. Uh, we still have a lot of resumes that I think that we can take one more look through, but I think at this point we may wait for the director to come on and then take that search over. Um, and then we can repost it again as well. So it is posted until filled, so we'll just.
I think that's good, yeah.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah, if we get.
Since now, you know, we've run out of, there's no, there's no other candidate after our first interview.
And it's still posted, so.
Still posted.
It is still posted. We've not received a resume in a while, so I will get back out and start reposting it in all the necessary places again and get it back up to the top of the list and see, see what comes in.
Um, I should ask for uh tabling the trustee vacancy to a ne- the next meeting.
Yes. I make a motion to table.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll have a quick five minute meeting and post that. Um, community preservation application tomorrow is our um presentation to the Community Preservation Committee. Diana will be there and it's at seven thirty and it's a twenty minute um.
And it's here.
And it's here.
It's here.
And um, we have a, Kathy, do you have the packet with you?
Diana's the project manager. I'm just a little bit of backup on it.
Yeah, Diana is the project manager on it and um, um, I spoke with the MBLC, uh, the coordinator of the grant. And he was very impressed with how much emotion we have had and forward movement um in spite of not having a director. So Diana, thank you very much. Kathy, thank you. And Lauren, who's also been doing great.
Yes, Lauren, yeah.
Um, and.
And Jen and Laurie.
And that's right, we put together the, the manual. Thank you very much.
Did a lot of work putting together. Laurie, will you have the handouts for the Board of Trustees tomorrow night? I was hoping you'd have them tonight.
We decided on just making one book to keep in the library.
Yeah.
Instead of a separate copy for everybody.
Okay, all right, so you are going to make one for any trustees that come tomorrow night. So we're all set.
Someone will bring this.
So we already, we submitted our.
You're right.
Proposals for the, the committee, the CPA committee.
They have all their copies.
They have all nine.
We did one copy to the library.
Right.
And that's all we had planned on. Who else would we be, who else would be?
Well, we, we talked back and forth about where we were going to give it to, to trustees, each a separate book. There's, there's no need to that.
No, we asked the trustees and nobody felt like they wanted a separate.
And I think we have an electronic version.
I had my mind with someplace else.
Yeah.
We have, we all have an electronic version.
Yeah, that's right. Sorry, no.
So, um.
I'm not able to attend tomorrow night.
Yeah, that's what, who's going to be, who's going to be able to be there? Um, okay, great, that's great.
Thank you all. I wrote the books. We're good.
You read the book, you wrote the book.
I asked for the first slot because we're unique in the process tomorrow night. There's going to be three groups. And I stated that we have to pay staff to come, they're on the payroll. And so Diana's the project manager, as we all know. She'll make the presentation and I'll help with any questions back up. It's all quite clear here. We do, just read from this. Some of the things that we want, we'll show the pictures because she didn't get back to us with any more pictures if possible. Right. Um, might want to pass those around, so.
If anybody, any member of the community wants to see that, they can come into the library and look at that.
I think everyone has a copy of this.
All right, I'm the only one.
They're all right there.
Yeah, I have a copy too.
These were not in the books, so do we need to bring these tomorrow or?
I think they need to be added too, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So we, we had met with a person from Donegan Systems who came into the library and measured the different areas and came up with different proposals. So she, um, and then we, we went over her ideas with her. Um, and it, it looks very promising.
So this is for the, what space?
This is for the back hall. Um, and also there is, so where, the space where there's the all the books and the two filing cabinets in the work area as well. So on the front page here, um, so page one is the back hall. So if you're, if you were looking at it this way.
So that's the door?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is the door getting in.
From the office.
From the office.
From the office.
Yeah, this is the door coming.
This is from the office, heading in.
And then the next page goes into detail of what, C, C one, C two, C one, C one.
And this is overhead here. When you're looking, this is what's overhead now presently.
Yes.
Ah, I see.
Where it rises up. Um, and so she was talking about um different shelving where the back row would be stationary. In the front row, you'd have a couple of different bookcases that would be on tracks, so you'd be able to move them aside, so.
So they slide or they accordion out?
Yes, they, they would slide.
Okay, so C two slides in front of C one, so you get to see C one's.
Yes, and the same on the other side.
Great.
And then um.
And did she happen to say how many linear inches did we get?
That's fourteen feet, right?
Total actual LFI, three thousand five hundred and thirty-one.
Great. They care about that.
Library.
Thank you.
We spent a lot of time with her.
Yes.
Person in on the phone.
Conference call because she wasn't feeling good, so she didn't, wasn't able to come, but we.
How many people, um, did we make the books for? Was it?
Nine.
So we need to have nine copies of this.
I would say so, yes.
I have two here, there's three.
Just back from the floor. I'm going to hold on to mine.
Is five.
Five, and she has some.
Five.
Well, here's ten.
Seven.
Excellent.
There's five.
You got one?
So we're all set. We'll give it to you to bring, I will, did we show these here?
We haven't shown them to get ideas.
Just, just to give you an idea of what we're looking at.
This is one of the spots, um, on the main, this main page. I believe it's this, this block area. Um, she was talking about something like this kind of rotary file. It's called a bi-file. It actually, you can actually turn.
Like a lazy Susan.
Exactly, like a lazy Susan and.
I couldn't even see that.
Oh, that's pretty cool.
It's, it's amazing. And that's where the coat racks and all those cleaning things and everything. I mean, we went through every inch.
Oh, so that little, that little.
Measured and measured and measured and we measured, measured together.
Oh, my goodness.
And oh, we need to also acknowledge the amount of work that Kathy and Lauren and Diana have done.
Well, Lauren and Diana really put in an awful lot.
I appreciate, I appreciate that. Um, because this really makes it more concrete, you know? And like, we, like we've said, it may not go to this vendor, but these make the things more concrete for us.
The point is, the board is going to ask tomorrow night, or let us know that we need three estimates. There was no time to get three estimates and several companies didn't respond as of yet to Diana. But at the end, if we're approved, it goes out to bid. Um, I think it will go out to bid depending on how it goes, but Denise runs that because she's the procurement officer. But we had a lot of fun seeing the possibilities of what we can actually do with the space that we have. I mean, our minds went crazy when we saw.
I know. It's so amazing what opt, options exist out in the world.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Barbara, you take that home and bring it back and give it to me tomorrow, okay?
So is there anything specific you need from us for tomorrow?
I think we have what we need.
I, I think basically we're going to give an overview, do you think, of what we have, what was found in the initial study. We're going to absolutely make them clearly understand we, forty-two hundred dollar grant was the design grant.
Okay.
Which we told them at the other meeting.
Right, but you, you're presenting this now for funding. It's going to be voted on tomorrow night. All seven proposals will be voted on. We get twenty minutes to talk and they'll give five minutes of asking questions. So I told Diane if.
Going to write something out or?
Yes, she's, yes, right.
And then.
Twenty minutes.
If, um, I can answer questions because it's different from other boards. It doesn't fall under an ethics thing where I'll state out, you know, I'll state out loud that I'm involved with the library, that I'm trustee, but I'm on this board as a housing authority member, that, that board. But that I can still vote on proposals for the library because you're supposed to advocate for what you want. So it's not, you know, we have, um, we have a husband who's coming for the trail and his wife is on the board, so she can still vote for the open space and trails, that type of thing. So, and I told Diana, if any other trustees want to speak up, absolutely, please do. And um, if there's any questions, I can answer. I'm allowed to do that, so.
I have a question. I know that in the report from them, they had, they talked about the leaks that are in the, you know, the ceiling and specifically over the historical documents. Um, did they look at all of the leaks that are in the library? Um, because I noticed a new one that I've never saw before in the children's room.
The one over in the corner as you're going into the meeting room? Not that we've had that before to the point where it came down into the bricks and pushed out all the pointing and it, I had that re-pointed when we had a full-time cemetery person. And he was on hiatus in the, in the wintertime, so instead of letting him collect, he did that type of handyman job, which was great.
Wonderful, yeah. Well.
But that leak's been there for a long time. It follows the vent pipes.
They're um stained, the ceiling tiles are stained and I hadn't noticed that before, so that's been there. Great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't go to the children's room too often, but we walked through today.
The most, the places where they photographed and are recommending repair and keeping a log. They recommend keeping a log of every problem with the library and reporting it to town hall. This would be by email, it would be a paper trail. Um, but you wouldn't store historical documents underneath those spaces. But they didn't actually go up into the.
But our back hall seems to be leak free, huh?
The only place it's not leak free is where that old rusty file cabinet is there in the corner. When you move that out, the pointing has, the water is.
Seeping.
Is attacked in there, yeah.
All right, um, so excellent. I think we're well prepared. I don't think that there's anything we need to vote on. Um, and a good number of us will be there tomorrow.
That's excellent. The, um.
Sorry.
Sorry, hyper work.
But it's okay. You're working at the second job.
Uh, the process is that if it's approved by the Community Preservation Committee, it goes to the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen for favorable or unfavorable action. And it goes to town meeting floor. The vote is on town meeting floor. We need support on town meeting floor. If it's approved at town meeting, the funding will become available July first.
Excellent, nice timeline.
From then, from now to then, we can also go out for bids, we can line things up, and we can start the clean out in the back. The proposal includes a really heavy duty cleaning and mold remediation, so.
And we had a, a Serapro come in and look at that too.
Yeah, and did an excellent, excellent estimate.
And that's in the book.
Two ways.
And that's in the book, yeah.
Two ways.
Um, so.
I'm excited about.
Going back one step to the um, LSTA grant, um, we have a report due in April and we have a report, a long-range plan that, um, I'm not sure whether it's just a draft in April. Um, so again, you know, we have things to do, but we're in good, good shape. They really were very happy and, and uh, again, can't, I can't like uh, give you enough credit, but thank you so much because it's.
Thank you very much, Diana.
Yeah, both of you, team effort.
Team effort. Definitely a team effort.
So yay, another good thing.
Lauren asked some wonderful questions too. She's not here, we're not giving her a lot of credit.
She, she is a wealth of information.
Yeah.
Absolutely, she is, absolutely.
So.
Does she have some previous knowledge on this?
Yes, she's, they're, they're a good team.
She's great with the archival information, so.
Great, thank you. And uh, I think that's the, oh, under other. I wanted, um, I don't know how we should do this, whether Diana should send a letter, um, but Saturday we need um, you know, to ask the highway department. One, I think we should thank the highway department for putting our, our um drain in that has worked so fabulously at, in this rainy, rainy fall. Um, so I'm excited that that worked. And then just to put a note out, a letter out that says we're open ten to two, and I know it's not the highest priority, but if we could, uh, I mean, I know the main streets are, but if we could get like a couple of uh, parking spaces and the walkway.
Couple of sweeps, yeah.
Yeah, I did, I did send that to Denise, but I'll.
Okay, did you send it to uh, the highway department, Bobby O'Callahan? You did?
I didn't do it to him. I, I think I asked if she could.
Would forward it.
Yeah, so, but, but I can do that specifically.
And um, we need to get the walkway to the basement shoveled because that's where, hopefully our shovel is and the salt melt is in the basement, so maybe we should put it in, November fifteenth, we should bring it up.
Well, and you need some more access to get out, too.
Yeah.
Well, the back doors is, is shoveled and to the shed, but not to the basement. But maybe they just don't know the basement door is there.
They probably don't, but our furnace is there, so if there's ever a problem.
Yeah, so Denise did have the furnace, uh, people, um, looked, 'cause the furnace was noticed leaking and um, in a couple of places, so she had the furnace guy down there looking at it.
That's a new furnace failing. Yeah.
They had a little bit of snow.
It's Saturday's snow, I think.
They had a little, a little short amount.
Yeah.
Could I just add, go back one second and add something? Bob Guptel provided me with the name um, of archivist Simmons College that do internships.
Right.
And I think this is something that we'll talk about at the next meeting in relationship to that.
But tag.
It's led by a professional archivist. It's training for internists from Simmons and um, it costs exactly what we can afford.
Nothing.
Excellent.
So they're, they're training to be archive librarians and they need projects. Yes, they can intern with us. And then they're supervised by a professional. So, you know, they're, they have to, again, you know, have somebody that, a resource ve- readily available to them, so I think that's a great um.
And it's in our purse, right?
Yeah.
And then the other business, Denise sent the conflict of interest law ethics um packet over for all of us, so if everyone could take one, pass it down. You need to sign it, fill it out, and take the test online and return your certificate to Anne.
But aren't they good for a certain period of time? 'Cause I know I've done it as a registrar. I'll have to find out. Ask. They're only good for a year. I thought it was more than a year.
I thought it was two years, but I think that if um.
I think it's two years, Jen.
I haven't read through the whole thing 'cause it, I just, we just got it.
I already have one because I got one at community preservation last week.
I think it's two years also.
But anyway, so they've asked us to sign this, return it back to Anne, and then if you've not taken the test in the last two years, which is I guess something we need to confirm with Denise.
Well, the ta, with the town clerk.
With the town clerk.
Yeah.
Yeah, she would have that. So we return this to Anne.
Yeah, Anne handles all that and then she holds on.
And then ask whether you need to take your test or not. If you've not taken the test and given your certificate to Anne, please do so. Um, did all the staff get this as well, Diana?
Not everyone yet, but.
Okay, there's extra copies here.
You need a copy for uh Laurel.
Yes.
Or actually you could put it.
She won't, she won't be there tomorrow.
No, she shouldn't be. She'll give almost get something.
Yeah.
Right.
But put it in the, um, the trustees box for, 'cause she'll be there sooner than us.
And a fact.
So if everyone can do their homework?
Wait, I can, no.
I'm gonna see her tomorrow at the car wash.
Where does, does live closest, but.
I'm very excited about Amy. I think that's wonderful.
Um, let's all put good vibes out there.
And she has a, she has a sense of the salary, right?
You know, we've not discussed it, but it was on the, um, it was on the description. She has a sense of it, yes. So that'll be tomorrow's discussion.
I would make sure I've got some.
Beck, oh.
I'm not sure.
Okay. Do I have, do I have to hand it in now?
On the back.
No, no.
No, no, you have to take it online.
Take the test online.
Yeah.
And then hand it in.
Then you print out the certificate.
Just to read it.
Tell the certificate, right.
And give it to Anne.
I just forgot my name. I think we've passed the agenda and it is before ten, nine o'clock, and I am very excited. Any other business? So we're gonna have our next meeting. Um, we will find a good time for all of us that we can put a candidate forward before the fifteenth. And I'll get the dates of the board of selectmen meetings so that we can do it before their next meeting, before, that happens before the fifteenth and.
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, say Anne McCain wants to do this. How do we decide between the two of them?
Well, we take a vote.
We have to have a meeting.
We just vote.
Yeah, yeah, just us.
Could I ask that on the next regular meeting?
Which is February?
I don't have my calendar.
I think it's the twenty-eighth also.
No, twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, twenty-eighth is a.
We are past half-year through the fiscal, halfway through the fiscal year. I'd like to put use of trust funds.
On the agenda?
Yes, for materials and so on and so forth.
I did start pulling all the vouchers um, and putting them into the computer. Um, I just have to figure out what the beginning balances were, so hopefully I can be able to give you an idea of, of what we've spent and where we're at. It seemed like we might be missing a couple of vouchers, so I'm gonna go through the computer and make sure. Um, but I think I have, I have started doing that.
They're watching you, Laurie.
Thank you, Laurie.
They're watching you, Laurie.
So, you know, that's what I've started doing to be able to tell you specifically where the money's been going at this point.
And um, we will obviously have uh left, leftover quote-unquote money from the um, director's salary line which will go back into the general fund or the.
But the MLS, I don't know where the um, the bibliotems is coming out.
That will go to the salary line and then.
What goes to the town, Jennifer?
Uh, if we have money left from um, the director's salary.
Alright, well, yeah.
Yeah, or free cash or what, it'll go back to the town. So, but yeah, it, it'll be, it will be right before town meeting, um, that Denise will check the numbers and be able to.
And if we have a new director.
Right, there won't be.
There won't be, yeah.
Right.
Well, the, yeah, there will be some hopefully.
Is there, at, at a point, the trustees used to discuss, we've discussed salary range, but once a candidate is offered a position, the trustees used to discuss a specific number within that range. Is that no longer part of the process?
Well, we did, we discussed this, we discussed that last time and there was a number that we said we would go up to.
Right, as to what it took.
Yeah, that's right, 'cause we just said, today, tonight we just said, make the offer.
Yeah.
And we didn't work specific.
But we didn't discuss the offer.
The offer's salary.
Right, we, our range was fifty-eight to sixty-two, I think. Just off the top of my head, I could be.
Yeah, I think sixty-two, two, or sixty-two flat.
Yeah, I'm gonna say it was sixty-two flat. I can go back in my notes and look from the last.
But at one point, it was the decision of the board of trustees.
That's what I wanna talk to Denise about to.
So then we're gonna have to have another meeting to vote on the salary?
Well, that's, I mean, that's how it was.
That's how it's, yeah, we've always made the decision, I mean.
And vote on the salary.
Money's in our budget, Denise is not gonna do that.
Do we know what the last one was?
That's what I'm looking back at.
The last candidate.
The last candidate, yeah.
Yeah.
That is the discretion of the trustees.
We could do that with our other meeting where we have to do the vacancy.
Well, we could do it now. I mean, um, we haven't closed the meeting.
We should do it now because if we're offering the job, it's all fresh in our minds, we're all here.
And the posting, what does the posting say?
Fifty-eight to sixty-two.
Okay.
I, I've seen us in the past, and I'm going back a whole lot of years, nickel and dime to the point where we're the losers. And I think that's bad management, I think it's a bad decision. I think it's not in the best interest of the library. Uh, and board of trustees is supposed to do what's in the best interests of the town and the library. I think we have an excellent candidate, the best candidate I've seen in years. With experience, enthusiasm. I. I would make a motion to offer her to the, the top of the range.
Um, and I, um, I totally agree with what you said, Kathy, and um, I think as I like, as we offered the previous candidate, I would be willing to um, go higher if, if it needs to be. But that, but what, what concerns me about offering higher is how do we, how do we find the funds for next year? We would have a little wiggle room this year, but where would we find the additional funds next year?
Well, when you say additional funds, you're talking about.
The last, last candidate.
If we stay in line with the two-and-a-half percent increase across the board or, or in line with what the town hall employees, what the town employees are offered. Because your budget goes up two-and-a-half percent a year, that's what you're allowed.
Right.
So.
So what's two-and-a-half percent or sixty-two?
You're not gonna get a, you're not gonna get a lot of wiggle room going into the next year if you offer less money.
But there's a budget amount.
Right.
I don't have that with me. There's a budgeted amount that's approved.
What was the contract amount? Sixteen, one-something, the contract?
Eh, no, I think it was sixty-two.
Sixty-two? And that would have gone up as of this past.
We have it right here, July.
I think, didn't Denise?
So the budget amount.
So it's not a matter of finding the money going forward because.
Offered that.
Yes.
Yeah, the sixty-five.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
I almost, I, I, my feeling is we start at sixty-two with room to negotiate. 'Cause if we go in at sixty-five.
I agree.
And she says, I mean.
Well, the top of the range is sixty-two.
We, we had that little bit of wiggle room that.
The top of the range in the posting was sixty-two.
But I'm trying to remember what the, I don't have the figures with me, but there's an actual budgeted amount.
And that was the contracted amount from the former director.
But they had talked to Denise before they, for the last person, and she said they could go up to sixty-five.
We could go up to sixty-five. Of course, these are public meetings, so, so we really.
Like wiggle room.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a loose term, yeah.
Yeah, no.
And um, and should we be talking about salary when, when um, the candidate could watch the, the selectmen meeting? Right, it's the truth, it's, it's right, it's an open meeting, you're right.
And you can't watch your second session.
It's a work for town that everyone's gonna know herself.
Yeah.
So, you know, just checking.
But if, if, I, what I'm suggesting is going with the top of the posting and then.
And we have, and we have some negotiating room. Can I have a second on that? Um, are, are you, are you, are you making, are you making a motion or are you just saying that?
Making a motion that we go with the top amount in the job posting.
And um, are you gonna say, and go up to sixty-five?
No, I'm, I'm making a motion that we, we make a salary offer.
At sixty-two.
At the top of the job posting.
Okay, all in favor?
Well, you didn't get a second.
Can I have a second? Sorry, I have a second tonight.
I'll second.
Uh, wait, Barbara's, looks like she's got a little.
Well, I'm, I'm like, what if we lose it because we're not willing to negotiate?
But we're still willing to negotiate. I'm saying the offer, the initial offer.
Well, then we need to, then we need to, we need to put the, um, then we need to put in that, in the motion that we're up.
Offering this with.
We can go up to.
With room for negotiation.
With, up to sixty-five with room for negotiation. So you wanna change your proposal?
I, I say, I, that's my motion.
Motion.
To negotiate.
So you wanna second that motion?
I'll second that motion.
And I'll.
I don't wanna lose her.
No, I don't wanna lose her either.
Right.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All subsa, abstaining. Yay, thank you, um, very exciting. And um, we will keep you updated. Um, I got my. And we are adjourned at eight fifty-three, eight, nice.
Fifty-eight.
This is.
Still made it before nine.
Because it was open.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you wanna take it, no card?
Okay.